Okay, welcome to this second study session for radio navigation. I've done the same thing that I did for the first study session, if you managed to catch that or have watched that. I've basically clicked all the questions, scrolled through them really, really fast. Anything that said PBN or satellite navigation or GPS, I clicked on. I clicked a few things that were VOR and ILS etcetera. I've not actually answered these questions yet. I've not really read them very well, to be honest. I just scanned over and picked out ones that will cover the whole range of things in the radio navigation classes and subject, but maybe a bit more favoured towards the things that have been completed after that first study session. So satellite augmentation, satellite navigation, bit of PBN stuff as well. And that's it. My phone is not linking to my computer. So what I've done instead is we're going to go very old school and we're going to use a bit of Microsoft Paint to draw some things if we need them, very simply, just draw some arrows etcetera if I need to explain something in more detail. And that's it really. So without further ado, I shall hide the Microsoft Paint, get comfortable, put some music on and we'll start the thing off. So once again, I'm using the Airhead ATPL question bank, very good, lots of stuff in it that's very useful. I'll talk about a few of the features as we go. One of those features being that you can create a little collection of questions like I've done today. And if you want access to it for a bit cheaper than you normally would, I have a link down below in the description to get a little 10% discount. So yeah, let's go. So radio navigation, which option correctly identifies the approach aids listed below to which the UHF band is assigned? So UHF, so we're not thinking VHF and HF pretty much. So a locator, that's basically a long range NDB, so you can point towards it. Localiser, that's a very precise VOR almost with one radial that you can follow in. So they're both, that's HF, that's VHF. The outer marker, what is the outer marker? I think that's HF, can't remember. And glide path, glide path definitely UHF, but you don't tune it UHF. You tune the localiser frequency and the glide path comes with it for your ILS. So I think it's going to be only four because I'm pretty sure that outer marker is not. Yes, so what is the outer marker? Let's see if it says, outer marker is VHF, that's 75. Localiser, yeah. Locator is an NDB, glide path is UHF, there we go. One for one, let's go. On the QDR of 075 with a magnetic heading of 295 and the same variation at the station of the aircraft, they would have to do any applying of variation. The relative bearing on the, so an RBI will show on an ADF indicator is, so it's going to point towards the beacon. This is exactly where we need to use a bit of paint. So QDR 075, so we've got the, 075 is going to be along here somewhere. So this is our NDB. It's going to be a bit janky because I'm unable to use stylus. I'm having to use just the mouse. I'm on the QDR, which means the radial magnetic of 075. So we're going to be up here sort of, 075. And the angle between north and us is going to be 075. And this is us over here in the aircraft. Our heading is, what was our heading again? 295. So our heading is 295, 270 is about here, 295 is going to be about here. So we're kind of pointing in this direction, which is 295. And we're trying to find out the relative bearing, which is going to be from our aircraft front to the NDB. So we're looking for this angle in here. All right, so just by a rough guesstimation, we can see that it's going to be more than 180, probably more than 270. What are the answers? We've got 040, it's not going to be that. 220, it's not going to be that because it's more than 180 by a significant amount. It's not going to be 140 because that would be over in this direction. So I'm going to go for the first option there, which is 320. So let's select 320, see what it says, 320 explanation. Yeah, there you go, that's a better version of what I just did. That's what you like. The explanations on this are quite good. If there's not an explanation that makes sense, you quite often get comments from other students and they'll teach you or try and explain what the answer is. Question three then, which of these figures depicts an electronic flight instrumentation system and EFS displayed in map mode? Okay, so map mode, what's map mode? Map mode is kind of like your actual flying. This is a bit of a tough question if you've not flown a plane with EFS before. But this top one is basically HSI, a horizontal situation indicator or something similar. And we've got a VOR tune, so we're doing VOR, VOR, yeah, OBI or OSI or something like that. So it's not going to be one. Two is, what have we got? That's more of like, this is what you would call a plan mode probably because it's just showing you the route. It's not showing the aircraft. Aircraft being either this symbol or these triangle symbols. This is more like a plan of what we're about to do. Figure three, I think is going to be the answer because figure four looks like a more zoomed in version of figure one. So I'm going to go for figure three, but it's very aircraft dependent what it's actually called, but I think it's number three. Yeah, explanation. So yeah, rose nav, rose, it's going through quite a lot of details here. Rose VOR, rose means like a full circle and arc is normally for when it's not a full circle. So did say rose map, yeah, not the best question, a bit clumsy. What I want to do now is show you a little app. It's called VOR Tracker and it is a very good app for training various different instrument flying procedures. This is very good if you are training for your instrument rating, that's probably the most useful. But also if you've got any SIM checks coming up for interviews and things like that, it's just a good tool to help you revise and study these sort of procedures if you need to, if you need a little bit of brushing up on your skills. It's been around for a while, it's got loads of good reviews. I think it averages almost a five star, between four and a half and a five star rating on the App Store and the Google Play Store. So worth a check out if you need to practise. And from the main menu, you've got various options. You can see that we can do various types of things, just simple course tracking, hold entries, DME arcs etcetera. So we'll start off with some simple hold pattern stuff. This is just to train how to enter the hold. You can see the hold displayed on the screen, it will be randomly generated with the instrumentation there, where very simple and intuitive controls, just left, right turns. You can fast forward it, you can bring up a little map to show you where you are in space. You can also do DME arc practice, not something that you do manually very much outside of your instrument rating. On your instrument rating, you will most likely have to do one of these. So again, very good practice for that. It does very simple radial interceptions and of course more complicated things as well. And in each of those examples, you can see that there was a different, slightly different instrument used. There was a HSI, a very basic CDI indication and that just shouts to the customisation options that are available. If you look in the settings on this, there's loads and loads of different customisations, all the way down to the colour of the needle that you want. So if you want a bright pink and a fluorescent yellow needle, you can do that. It's up to you. Probably not too realistic of what's actually in the aircraft, but you know, if it helps you, then it helps you. Just worth a check out if you fancy it. I'll put a link to it in the description below. Click on it, have a little scan, see what you think. I think it's worth it and let me know if you find it useful too as well in the comments. Question four then, what kind of disturbances may occur in the area marked by the circle in the figures? The circle figure, we've got a ground wave and a sky wave, so they're going to interfere with one another and cause a bit of confusion. So we're not going to get diffraction. We're going to get some interference, problem of two signals. Absorption, it's not absorbing into anything. Shoreline coastal effect, we don't even know if there's a shore or coast there. So fading and interference has got to be, yes. Loads of comments on this, so this is quite a good feature, I like this. When the receiver picks up two signals with the same frequency, fading, both ground wave and sky wave meeting and interacting, that's why it's worth to say fade the signal, yeah, cool. And a few people have seen it in exams fairly recently, last year. Yeah, cool. The ICAO PBN manual document 9613, I am my favourite of the ICAO PBN manual documents. Who's looking that up, come on. Defines a set of navigation specifications for different airspace concepts. Where may a pilot encounter the specification RMP AR approach? So approval required, so it's going to be, yes, specific approval from the authorities and your company or whoever you're flying to for, to be able to fly these because they go below the normal RMP approach. Because the normal RMP approach is 0.3 and AR allows you to go between 0.3 and 0.1 depending on what it says you need on the chart. So approaches that require specific authorisation to fly, that sounds right. En route, no, it's approach. En route, no, it's approach. A route or part of a route that is airway regulated, no. So this is just, do you know what it means? The acronym means essentially. AR, approval required. What is correct regarding NAVSTAR, GPS and GLONASS? So NAVSTAR, GPS being the American system, GLONASS being the same, they both work roughly the same. So the same data navigation services by agreement? No, Russians and Americans are not going to agree on much. Different data for navigation services but are interoperable? Yes, because you can, a lot of modern receivers can use both. The same data for navigation, it's not the same data, it is different because one's coming from one system with however many satellites it was and the Russian is using different satellites. So therefore will provide slightly different information. Yeah, so it's not the same data, it's not going to be one or three. Number four, different data for navigation services and for this reason they are not interoperable. No, the computers are smart enough nowadays that they can take one signal from one, one signal from the other and cross-connect them in a way. Yeah. RMP type is defined as a containment, containment value expresses distance in, from the intended position with, in which flights would be for at least. So it's however accurate is knock miles, 95%. So kilometres 95, no, kilometres 98, no, knock miles 98, no, knock miles 95, yes, got to be that. What is the approximate rate of descent in feet per minute required to maintain a three degree glide path at a ground speed of 100 knots with a bracket on the end for some reason? So this is just a rule of thumb that you'll learn when you start flying ILSs. Ground speed times five will be roughly right. Or you can take, yeah, ground speed times five is the usual thing that you do. So ground speed is 100 times five, obviously the units are different, feet per minute and 100 knots. But you do the vertical speed in feet per minutes and the horizontal speed in knots. So it's just five times. Something you'll become very familiar with as you start to fly. Or you could do it that way, one in 60 rule, the gradient. Yeah, so it's the approach gradient times the horizontal speed and a three degree path is the approach gradient of 5%. Yeah, five times ground speed gives you your vertical speed. When are you considered established on an NDB approach? So NDB is plus or minus five because it's not that accurate and the procedures are designed around that. Question 10, some flight management systems have dedicated navigation receivers, for example, DME. Okay, allowing for the automatic tune function, the main advantage of automatic, so some FMS systems have dedicated. All right, so it's, yeah, some FMSs will automatically tune DMEs that are completely separate from the DMEs that you are tuning manually. That's what this is getting at, so the receivers are completely different. The main advantage of automatic tuning is that it provides the best available signals for position calculation. Sounds about right because you aren't physically having to pick which one's going to be the best anyway. Tuning occurs much quicker than with manual selection. I suppose also correct. Tuning is also possible outside the designated operational coverage. Now I don't want to do that because you'll get unreliable signals. And the calculated position is more correct with manual selection. Is more correct than, no. Tune occurs much quicker than with manual selection? I suppose it does, but it's, you manually doing it is through an external DME selector. This one's a dedicated, so you're not going to be able to tune the dedicated one manually, if hopefully that makes sense. Because it's all contained within the flight management system. So I think it's a first, provides the best available signals for position calculation, got to be that. Who, yeah, explanation, oh my god. Yeah, basically it does automatic position updating. Question 11 then, modulation is the process of impressing and transporting information by radio waves. A continuous wave which is capable, certain audible signals without modification? No, modulation is the process of editing a wave to allow the signal to be amplified to the required, but no. The process to provide a radio carrier wave for transmission? Provide a radio carrier wave for transmission? The process of impressing and transferring information by radio, it's got to be the first one. Because you can get AM, FM and all you're doing is sort of sending a code within the main radio wave that can be processed. Yeah. That's a whole bit of information on modulation, which I'm not going to go into, any comments? Oh, there you go, that's quite a good one. Modulation equals information, yeah, I get that. It's not bad. Little reminder for you. In a primary radar using pulse techniques, pulse repetition frequency determines. So how often you send out the pulses? You need to do that because if you do them too short between the pulses, some of the pulses might be returning when you're in listening mode essentially. You send out in like speaking mode and you need to wait a certain amount of time and hopefully the signal bounces back, the little pulse will bounce back in that time in between when you're in the listening mode. So it's to do with range. So it's target discrimination, no. Beam width, no. So it's going to be minimum range or maximum range. So minimum range is going to be, it's not the frequency, it's sort of the length of the pulses. Because if you send out a long pulse of information, it might return before that pulse is finished. So that's what dictates the minimum range, it's the pulse length, not the frequency in between them, which is the pulse repetition frequency or not the gaps in between them. The gaps in between the pulses is the pulse repetition frequency essentially. And the minimum range is determined by the length of those pulses or pulse pairs. So it's going to be this. You need to give it time to come back. Come on. Oh god, why is it taking so long to load? Oh, there we go, have me nervous there. PRF is the number of pulses per second emitted by a radar system and determines the maximum range of the radar system. The higher the PRF, the shorter the waiting period between pulses. Similarly, the longer the pulse length, the shorter the waiting period between pulses. The system needs an adequate waiting period between the pulses to allow the signal to reach the target and return to the antenna before the next signal is sent. Therefore, if the pulse repetition frequency increases, it stands to reason that the maximum theoretical range is going to decrease because the gaps in between the pulses will be less and the pulse recurrence periods are short, yeah, cool. Bit of a thinker, but not bad. All right, next, provided that a DMEP is installed, MLS, microwave landing system can provide. So if it's got precision DME, it can do the curved ones. But is it curved approaches only? No, I don't think so because the segmented is when it switches itself off and on to avoid mountains and stuff and it doesn't need the precision DME for that. So it would be able to do it with it as well. So it's got to be that one. Cool, all correct. Question 14 then, we're getting on nicely here. So aircraft autonomous integrity monitoring AIM is a type of airborne based augmentation system that relies on GNS information as well as information from additional onboard sensors. Relies on information from additional onboard sensors only, can only function within the range of GBAS, no. Relies on GNSS information only, no. So it's checking all different sources to make sure that the position calculation makes sense. So that can be GNS information as well as things like tuning DMEs and VORs and getting distances from that. So it's a whole combination of things to check the position, yeah. Question 15, an electromagnetic wave consists of an oscillating electric field and an oscillating magnetic field. Which statement is correct? So a dipole antenna can only trans, no. When signal passes through the antenna, the E and the H fields are perpendicular to the wire. No, they can't both be perpendicular, can they? Well, I suppose, yeah, whatever. When a signal passes through the antenna, the E field is parallel to the wire and the H field is perpendicular to the wire. So the E field parallel, yes. And the next one is the H field is parallel to the wire, no, because you want the electricity field in the signal to interact with the wire to generate electricity, so that makes sense. Correct, good. Question 16 then, the unit for measuring frequency is hertz and measures cycles per second. So hertz per minute, no, metres, metres, hertz per second. That's a beautiful question. Didn't even realise I'd clicked that one for my collection, but that's good. Refer to the annex, this shows an EFS and EFS navigation display where the required navigation performance and actual navigation performance are shown. Which statement is correct? So we need our AMP to be less than our RMP, otherwise we're not satisfying the stuff. So where's the AMP, where's our RMP? There, down the bottom. So for this particular route, to go to JUPI, we need to be at least have accuracy of two nautical miles 95% of the time. What we're actually achieving, our actual navigation performance is 0.03 knock miles of accuracy 95% of the time. Okay, so we're well below our RMPs, we're good to fly this route. Which statement is correct? During the cruise phase, there is no warning if the AMP value is 0.03 higher than the RMP value as RMP2 applies to the approach phase? Nah, that's just nonsense, I don't even know what that's trying to say. So it's saying that the AMP is 0.03 higher than the RMP? No, it's less. The navigation system is performing to an accuracy of two knock miles and the airplane is within 0.03 miles of the ZAR track. Yeah, our actual and the thing that we need to be achieving is two, sounds about right. The aircraft is currently performing according to the RMP. Yes, but a warning will be given, no, it's performing better than the RMP, I suppose, at the moment. But a warning will be given if the AMP increases beyond, a warning will be given, but it's not performing according, it's performing slightly better. The aircraft is 0.33 knock miles offset to the left of track and the maximum limit is a two knock. Maximum limit is a two knock mile offset in theory, but to the left? How, nah, that's just, yeah, you can't tell that. So it's performing to an accuracy of two knock miles and it's within 0.03 miles because that's what we're actually navigating to, got to be that. No, oof, the aircraft is currently performing according to the RMP, it is, yes. And a warning will be given if the AMP increases beyond. Yeah, okay, fair enough, explanation, quite tricky wording, those two. The image shows an RMP value of two and an AMP of 0.03. The RMP standard is for the present situation, not later. And a warning will be given if the AMP exceeds the RMP value, yeah, so, yeah, okay, fair enough. Bit tricky, I think, those wording questions like that. 18, how is GBAS information sent from the ground station to the aircraft? So it's a VHF data link, it's not going to be a voice, it's not going to be telling you. It's got to be VHF, yeah. So it's, yeah, over the radio, it's not sent over anything fancy. Which of the following correctly describes the principle of integrity monitoring within an AAS system? AAS uses redundant range measurements to support, so airborne based, so this is like AIM, let me just look at it. Using other external sources to confirm the GPS source or something like that. So it uses redundant range measurements to support fault detection or fault detection and exclusion? Yeah. That sounds about right, could be RAME, that's what they're getting at, that's RAME, that's a form of, what is RAME? Receiver Autonomous Airborne Integrity Monitoring. And that's airborne, that is a form of AAS, yeah. So requires a satellite based augmentation system to, no, because it's AAS, it's not SBAAS. We don't have to have both. Uses ground based radio navigation aids to support fault detection and fault detection. That's AIM, that's airborne integrity, autonomous integrity monitoring. That's, we had a question on that before where it's using ground based nav bases to support the GPS whereas this doesn't necessarily, it's not necessarily talking about ground based, if that makes sense. So I think it's the first one. Yeah, it's getting at the AIM, the RAME system is what this question is asking about. Which of the following alternatives is correct? Oh, which option is correct regarding audio and visual signals in the cockpit when passing overhead the ILS middle marker? So BAW, blue amber white as you approach the runway. So it's not going to be blue light, it's going to be amber lights, these bottom two and 3000 or 1300. And it's alternating dots and dashes because it's B, so outer, middle and inner. So outer, middle and inner. Outer is dot, dot. No, uh, altering dot dashes, they're both the same, so that's because alternating dots and dashes is the Morse code sim uh, signal for C. So it's like outer, center and inner in terms of the uh, Morse code, but that doesn't help us here. And it's not gonna be the highest one, the highest one's on the middle. Uh, sorry, on the inner marker, so the middle one is gonna be on the middle marker. Seventy five megahertz is the, that's what it's done, it's got all the frequencies here. So seventy five hertz is the transmission frequency. And they're modulated on the way in. Outer is four hundred, middle is thirteen hundred and inner is three thousand. So it's put all the numbers there to confuse you. Um, we know it's amber, that's right, yeah. Yeah, so look. Four hundred hertz for the outer, thirteen for the middle, three thousand for the inner, and they transmit on the seventy five megahertz frequency, that's just what they're modulated to. On an ILS approach when flying overhead the inner marker, if available, look a little flashing light, well, we just did this. Why are they right next to each other? Should sort of shuffle them around. Um, on an ILS approach when flying overhead the inner marker, BAW, BAW, yes, white. The distances from two DMEs are plotted directly on a map, they are. So two range circles, yep. Intersecting at two points, yeah, so it's gonna be, oh, we can use paint again to explain this a bit better. Just delete everything I've done so far. And get it up so you can see what I'm doing. So we've got NDB one, which is gonna start over here. And NDB two, which is gonna start over here with our little NDBs in the middle. Gonna be two range rings intersecting at two points like that. Which means that it's going to be two points, two points, and it shows plan ranges, no, it doesn't, it shows slant ranges. DME is the slant from it to your aircraft. Correct. Twenty-three, almost there, and NDB transmits a signal pattern in the horizontal plane, which is a cardioid balanced at thirty hertz, a beam rotating at thirty hertz, a bi global circular, I've never even heard of that. Omni-directional, which means, yeah, it's omnidirectional, because it's non-directional beacon. It's not pointing anywhere, so it's not gonna rotate and point somewhere. Cardioid has sort of the focus point. And the bi-lobal, that means it's gonna be facing two ways, I think. Omni-directional means every direction or, in other words, non-directional. Does it even explain what a bi-lobal circular is? I have no idea. No, doesn't explain it, but if you wanna look up what a bi-lobal circular is, please feel free. Second last, which of the following correctly describes the ILS localizer radiation pattern? So, two overlapping lobes, yes, on the same UHF, no, because this is a VHF system. If it's the, yeah, the localizer. That would be talking about the glide slope, because the glide slope is UHF. A pencil beam comprising a series of smaller beams each carrying different, no. Two overlapping loads on the same VHF carrier wave, yes. Two overlapping loads on different radio carrier frequencies, but with the same modulation. No, so it's, it's the same carrier frequency, but differently modulated. Whereas this is saying, yeah, so it's differently modulated, not different carrier frequencies. And finally, in a satellite-assisted navigation system, a fix is obtained by speed, distance, time. So measuring the pulse length of signals received from a minimum number of satellites received in a specific sequential, no. Measuring the time taken for an aircraft's transmission to travel to a number of satellites in known position and return to the air, no, think how strong the you'd have to send something up to space from your aircraft and then wait for it to come back. Measuring the time taken for a minimum number of satellites transmissions in known positions to reach the aircraft receiver, yes. Along with the time that it was sent, and you do speed, distance, time calculations. The aircraft's receiver measuring the phase angle of signals received from a number of satellites. Nothing to do with phase angles, it's three. Yeah. That's just the concept of how it works, that was pretty successful, I think, ninety six percent, there you go. Um, that kinda concludes us for the uh, radio navigation series. Normally I do a live stream thing, but at the moment I'm actually about to do a pretty intense bit of trading with my company, my airline that I work for, uh, to change aircraft. So I'm not really gonna have time to do that. So hopefully you'll forgive me for this subject not, um, teaching, not doing a live stream, we'll just do these study sessions. I think they're a bit more beneficial, a bit more slow. And uh, I can sort of tailor pick the questions maybe a bit more. Um, but I'll shortly put up a poll so we can decide together as a community, as a group, what class or what subject we're gonna be doing next. I imagine it'll be one of the AGK aircraft general knowledge ones, they seem to be the next biggest and most requested ones. Like engines, electrics or just uh, instrumentation. But please let me do in the poll, wanna put it up and keep an eye on YouTube for when that poll might be, and on Instagram if you haven't. And make sure and check out this website and also the VOR tracker app. It's very good, especially for just getting your head around these things, as I've talked about before in the little clip earlier, but yeah, good luck with everything and peace.